Cody Hedges.
Here.
Krista Hollup.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Danielle Gravy.
Present.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Susan Wood.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Tierra McKeonis.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Next on our list is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Minutes from, oh, let's see. Seventeenth, April seventeenth. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Have a proper motion and a second to approve the minutes of our last meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a vote, please?
Motion approved, six to zero with two abstaining.
Thank you. Next is our public forum, general interest public forum. It's the time for any person who to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda. We have no one in the audience. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do not.
Okay. The public interest forum is closed. And we will move to our first agenda item. Mr. Gravy, would you mind introducing that?
Public hearing Z O A dash twenty-five dash four and ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning multi-unit residential parking requirements and making conforming amendments therewith.
Thank you. Can we get the report from staff?
You may. Thanks, Commission. Scott Cutler, Senior Planner, presenting this item tonight around multi-unit residential parking requirements. This is another one of the 2024 state legislation related to land use and housing. And this was House Bill twenty-four thirteen oh four, which was called Minimum Parking Requirements. I'll get into what that does in just a second, but we have decided as a city to move forward with complying with that state regulation per council direction. And this code amendment also has a decent amount of conforming amendments to help clean up our code and some definitions, and I'll get into that in just a minute. The state legislation prohibits municipalities from enacting and enforcing minimum off-street parking requirements for multi-unit residential developments within applicable transit service areas. That prohibition on requiring parking applies to all new multi-unit development and to reuse of existing buildings converting into multi-unit residential development. Doesn't prevent developers from providing parking, it just prevents municipalities from requiring a minimum quantity of parking. Doesn't change anything else related to ADA, accessible parking, bicycle parking, loading, or anything related to affordable housing. And this bill takes effect June thirtieth of this year, so in just a couple months. We know that parking can be controversial, I think, to a lot of people. Many people drive. And removing requirements can maybe be perceived as a big change, but we actually believe there will be limited impact in Wheat Ridge due to market forces. Parking, especially in the suburbs, is often necessary to make a project successful. And providing some parking reduces risk for developers, not only for them to lease their spaces, but also for financial reasons and loans. And parking is market-driven in that developers are best equipped to know what ratio of parking needs to be provided to attract tenants and buyers. And we naturally see that the more suburban a development is, the more parking is provided per unit, the more urban, the less parking, and it's less likely that residents will own cars and need to drive. This ordinance would not prohibit the city from requiring accessible parking or bicycle parking to ensure that site access and accessibility are maintained. One of the things that the bill allows a lot of flexibility on with cities is to define what multi-unit residential actually is. In this case, the legislation, our intent is that it applies to a typical apartment or condo development, but it doesn't apply to something like townhouses. Townhouses are actually referred to as single-unit attached. You own the unit, you own the land under the unit, and typically townhomes will be included with a garage or some sort of deeded parking space. But they really function as single-unit homes, just with a shared wall. In other places in the code, townhomes are lumped into multi-unit residential, so part of this ordinance is actually separating out townhomes from the definition of multi-unit and creating two different definitions. That way, we can still require parking for townhomes, including garages and things like that. The other thing that the bill defines is what a transit service area is, which is anywhere within a quarter mile of a transit line with greater than thirty-minute frequencies, and that is actually like ninety percent of Wheat Ridge already. We have, all of the major corridors have frequent enough bus service to qualify. And so that includes nearly all areas that are zoned R three, M U one, and M U C, which allow multi-unit residential as a use by right. So where we allow multi-unit is already on these corridors, and so our proposal is to essentially align where the parking is being removed, or not removed, sorry, not required with these transit service areas, which essentially cover the entire city. So the ordinance will make the following changes. The big change is obviously to remove the parking minimum requirements for multi-unit, but retaining the parking requirements for townhouses. It will update the definitions, like I said, of the multi-unit dwellings to distinguish between apartments and condos versus a townhouse or row house. It will update all of our development standards and use charts to include terms for both of those types. And then it will have a bunch of conforming amendments related to parking clarification of requirements, clarifying ADA requirements, EV spaces. And it actually will also remove some parking reductions because we don't necessarily need parking reductions for multi-unit residential anymore. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions, so happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. I will now open the hearing for public comment. We do not have an audience. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
All righty. Well, I will now close the citizens forum and will entertain questions from the commissioners. We'll start on the right. Commissioner Wood.
The one question that I had is particularly with multifamily developments. Have there been complaints, and I realize that this isn't even in effect at this point in time just yet, but in the past, have there been complaints that there is insufficient parking or complaints from residences nearby that there's parking outside of designated the multifamily development parking? In other words, does it seem like there's adequate parking as it is today?
The only comment that we've ever really gotten is people, some people get concerned about street parking and maybe the perception that the parking in front of their home is private and theirs. And I don't know, there's definitely some spillover, but we're just not dense enough to really have those issues in Wheat Ridge. I don't know if you've heard any.
I appreciate that. I have seen that in more dense communities, and I wondered if it were ever an issue here. And even if it were, there's a requirement to comply with state law, so moving forward, that makes sense to me.
I would say the only other thing that we've seen come up is that some buildings might charge an extra amount for parking, and that disincentivizes people from wanting to use their garage, and then they'll park in the street. But that's been rare as well, at least in Wheat Ridge.
I guess I would just add that sometimes on the homes with garages, the management company itself will actually put a a rule into place that they have to use their garage for parking so that it does not create that spillover because they're using it just for storage. So that's something, too, that we can look at.
Thank you. Commissioner Keonis.
I have no questions at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Gravy?
I just was curious about, it's interesting, the townhomes or townhouses distinction here. Has that, has there been like a clear delineation between condos and townhomes? In the code prior to this, is it about the ownership of the land like you alluded to? I mean, is it? Because it seems a little blurry, I think, to most people, like what makes one one and not the other. And so I'm just curious, I guess, if there is a clear distinction, if you know, and I know this should have been a question flagged, you know, prior, but if you know, like, is there like a rough approximation of how much, how many townhomes the city has compared to condos?
I don't know the second half of that question. I think we've seen a lot more townhouse development recently. Some of that is related to the state's regulations. Makes it really hard to build new condos in Colorado, the condo defect legislation. I mean, it's also a construction-type difference. Condos are typically, you don't own the land under you, you kind of only own the walls in. They're typically somewhat indistinguishable from an apartment building, whereas a townhome, it's always that side-by-side. You own your lot. It's just that you happen to have a shared wall, but there's not like people above or below you. That's kind of the big distinguishing is. Condos feel more like apartments and look more like apartments, and the ownership model is different.
Yeah, and you can condominiumize a townhouse unit. It's just the form of ownership, really. So you own the airspace versus the ground under you, but technically you could condominiumize a townhouse complex just as easily as you could a condominium complex.
Yeah, it's both a model of ownership, but also we're kind of trying to speak to the form of the building, so a townhouse functions more like a single-family home, detached single-family in terms of ownership and you own the lot. And then a condo functions more like an apartment for the same reasons.
Yeah, and so like the developments on thirty-eighth, on the east end, like off of DePew and then right off of J, like both of those, maybe they're different, but they seem to be kind of multi-level attached home, you know, homes that are owned, and so I imagine if you're familiar with those, those would be townhomes then?
Correct. Yeah, those are all townhouses, and they're all individually owned. They all have their own garage.
Yeah.
So again, they function more like a single-family.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, just because it's kind of an exception, but it makes sense, and so it's good to understand the reasoning. I'll say briefly on your, on the condo construction defects issue, there was also legislation passed this session that will, is aimed at remitting some of the risk involved in building condominiums, and so should be interesting to see how, you know, that plays out and what kind of impact it has on the market. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian Gravy. Commissioner Hollup?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the on-street parking versus off-street parking, so maybe you can help me. I'm reading it as the law, the new House bill talks about off-street or like city parking, street parking, but do we have minimum requirements for multi-use right now for like the developer, and will those change?
I can help clarify that. So we, in our code right now, we currently have onsite parking, so that means on private property. That's what would be going away as part of this requirement, but that doesn't get rid of other requirements that the city would have to build public improvements related with the new developments, so that's curb, gutter, sidewalk, often on-street parking as well. You'll see with some new developments, they've added sidewalks or widened streets to accommodate on-street parking. That's all in the public right of way and will remain. It's just that off-street private parking, we can no longer require. That doesn't mean they can't build it.
Right.
Or won't build it.
So am I understanding this correctly, and I might not be, that the bill says no no more requirements on-street, and we're going to step farther in saying we're not having any requirements except the ADA and those?
It's the opposite, actually. So, yeah, the bill is saying, no, we can't require private property parking.
Okay.
But we can continue to allow the on-street, which functions differently. It's not, those spaces aren't deeded, those are all public.
Right.
Spaces.
But we can't require those?
We can, yes.
We can, okay.
On the on-street, yes.
I think I'm a little confused in my head, but that is a helpful clarification. Okay, then I have no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood. Yes? Hedges, I'm sorry, where did I get Woods? I'm on the other side. Yes. Wow. Forgive me.
That's all right. No problem. So I have a few questions. So you mentioned that you decided to make townhouses single-family attached per the code. And I think that makes sense because when I was doing research on it, like, it's kind of pick your poison for what you want to do with it. Half the people do multifamily with them, some of half the people treat them as single-family. But to me, I was curious how, when I started thinking about the purpose of thirteen oh four, what that meant in terms of saying that townhomes, or townhouses as we call them, would be requiring parking and how that would actually work in practice in terms of meeting the purpose of the actual goal. So could you touch on what you see as the purpose of thirteen oh four and how you think requiring parking still for townhouses might impact the ultimate goal that it has when it was passed last year?
That's a great question. I did not write the House bill and wasn't involved in that, so I don't know the real intent. I think it's reducing barriers to housing, and as we know, especially on multifamily, parking can add a huge amount of cost to development, and a lot of times parking gets overbuilt because of city requirements. The, I spoke with Dola, the Department of Local Affairs, actually about this because we were like, we don't really, we don't know how to treat townhomes. We don't know, does the state consider these to be multifamily or single-family? And the answer was, we don't care, which kind of made me speak, like, it made me think about that, and they're what they said is their focus is really on new apartment construction and specifically reducing barriers to multifamily apartment or condo along these corridors. Townhomes are not at the density level that other state legislation is really seeking on some of these corridors, especially at TOD train, transit areas. So I think the bill's intent was really to focus on the apartment construction and reducing barriers there and also around affordable housing, because a lot of city requirements, including our own, we require way more parking than actually gets used at affordable housing developments. And so by removing these requirements and allowing an affordable housing developer to build what they know their residents need, it's reducing a barrier there. I think townhomes is treated separately simply because it's a totally different type of construction and ownership and not as common in some of these TOD areas that are really that high-density product. So hopefully that helped.
I think it does, and it makes me start to think about, I think you're right, the main target they had was multifamily, but a lot of the things you see, though, is those podiums with the five on top, the six podium. When you see a building that's concrete on the first floor and then has five stories of wood, that's a podium build, right? And so those seem to be what Denver's going with and some of the other areas as well, but we have the thirty-five-foot limit here, which probably is what's leading to the townhouse development. And so that's one thing that kind of got me concerned about having parking requirements for townhouses still because market forces would probably drive to do it anyways. But also, I think if we have the thirty-five-foot limit, and that's what's causing townhouse development here, I'm wondering if it would make sense to say that even though we're considering them single-family attached dwellings, would it make sense for us to not require parking for them within transit service areas still? Because that would probably possibly serve the purpose of the bill more closely. And would that be something that you all would entertain as an idea?
I think that's probably a bigger policy question, to be honest, and I, you know, I don't know, frankly, if council would go for that or not. We definitely thought about it. I think we made the decision on townhomes because of some of the other factors we talked about. We do have a lot more exempted areas now from height than we used to as well, so Wadsworth, the Lutheran campus, TOD areas are all exempted, and that's where we have started to see some of that five-over-one podium apartment-type construction. West thirty-eight is a good example. I don't know, I think it'd be a challenge simply because townhomes are allowed in so much of the city, including areas that are far enough away from the corridors. The other thing is that ninety percent of Wheat Ridge is covered by these transit service areas, so the policy call there was to just, across the board, make this recommendation instead of actually looking at the transit service areas only because they cover ninety percent of the city already. So I think that's probably something we could look at in the future, and city plan might look at some parking things as well. But I don't think as part of this, that would happen.
I wasn't pushing it hard enough, I'm sorry. So I guess my thought here then is I'm, it rubs me to not, to still require it because there was one idea of the market forces would drive it, and so I think that's the way to go with it. And a lot of cities around the country do that as well with eliminating minimum parking requirements anyways. And so I think that's a direction that would be ideal to head to eventually. I don't think we're ready for that yet, but and I think what you have written does meet the overall need and requirements within thirteen oh four, but is there a way to request that potentially the city council consider in the future eliminating that parking requirement for townhouses if we pass that, pass this today? Could that be something that could be requested?
Yeah, what you could, what you could do in this event is if the majority of your colleagues up there agree with amending the motion, you could make a motion amended with that request. But we would not be just asking council to consider that without that request coming from you all.
Could I ask that?
That would be under the rules of order, so there's a point of clarification, so we're gonna have to make a motion and get it seconded, and then at that time you could amend the motion. Then we would talk about the amendment, and then we go back to the original motion.
Okay, I think.
Correct, Janet?
Would we wrap up the questions first and then have that be a component?
Yeah, we're not, we're not in that order business yet.
Okay, cool. Then, yeah, I think then that would be, because I think from Scott, the way you were talking about it, it doesn't sound like city council would quite have the appetite yet to have that eliminated for townhouses, and so I think it's probably wise to go forward with what you have. At least is where I'm thinking about it for how I vote tonight, and then I think that amendment is something to be worth, just to start that conversation, to see if the appetite is there at some point, so.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a fair question, for sure. I think that the other factor that we need to think about, though, is that townhomes are often built within single-family neighborhoods, and that would create a larger impact on the on-street parking in front of other people's homes. I know that one project that we were looking at, I think people were concerned about it even though they have garages because the garages weren't back, and they were concerned that they weren't going to use them and that they would just park on the street, and then it would clog up the street. So we've actually heard kind of the opposite in these areas where townhomes are built around single-family, and I think that's another reason that we lean toward at this point, because we are still a suburban suburb. And because of the location that townhomes are typically built, that's, I think, another reason that we looked at it in the light of not including the townhomes.
I think that makes sense, and that's why I think having that discussion is warranted, because Scott did mention that even though those are concerns, we are not overparked in any way on on-street parking, and so having that conversation to say, you may think this is a problem, but we actually don't have problems with on-street parking right now, is something that I think is worth discussing, because it's worth coming to that realization as there is actually plenty of on-street parking if there were to be a problem, and realistically, market forces are probably going to drive it to not even have that problem anyways. And so starting that conversation might be worthwhile within Wheat Ridge. And I just, I don't, I agree with your stance where it's probably not ripe to pass it right now, but I think it's ripe to talk about it. So I think that's the direction from this one, but again, that's more, more on the amendment side, so.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Disney?
No questions.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions.
Can I ask one more? Oh, yeah, of course, sorry, my bad. Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler, I have a couple of questions. So my girlfriend lives in a town, because you were talking like townhouse, you own the ground under it, alleged in theory. So where my girlfriend Debbie lives, she has the bottom floor, there's a middle floor and a top floor that are all, so how to your question earlier, Commissioner Gravy, what, how do you, what's the definition, what's the difference between a townhome and a condo? Or a townhome and multifamily in that, in that instance?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds like a condo to me. We have it in the code. I can try to find it. But we did update a definition, create an updated definition for townhomes. Let's see if I can find it. So it's called dwelling single attached for townhouse, but it's three or more dwelling units where each unit is attached to other units by party walls, where habitable spaces of different units are arranged side-by-side rather than stacked. where habitable spaces of different units are arranged side by side rather than stacked. This can include but not limited to townhouses with individual exterior entrances. And then they're also referred to as single-unit attached townhouses or row houses. So it's, it's this very distinctive side-by-side type of unit.
And that's what Wheat Ridge is going to call a townhouse?
Correct, yes. And that's, that's a pretty universal definition too, yeah.
How does this bill or this, or how does this affect multi-use? And I cannot remember what the initial is going to be. Where you have some residential or a business on the bottom and residential on the top.
That's a good question. So it won't impact any parking requirements for the bottom floor, which retail, commercial, those will be remained for now. Upper floors, if they're multi-unit, like apartment or condo, the parking requirements would not apply. That's what the state legislation says. Again, that doesn't mean that someone couldn't provide parking. It's just the city is no longer saying, you have to provide X amount of spaces. It's saying, you can, you can provide this, we're not going to tell you how many or how few.
Thank you. Mr. Gravy, you had one more question?
Thank you. I guess on that, now I have just two quick ones. On that last comment, but there, there is a maximum, right? So that, I think there was in a table on here where it's like two and a half.
There are maxims in some zone districts, specifically our higher-density mixed-use districts. It's two and a half per unit. We've never had someone even come close to that number. But it's intended so that someone doesn't just decide to build a huge parking lot, or I don't know. It's actually definitely been more used in the commercial aspect, where you have a big box that wants to build a ton of parking that will never get used.
Yeah.
And so it's, it allows us to say, actually, we would rather you build less and have it be more utilized. But yeah, we do have parking maxims in some zone districts, the high-density ones.
And then, just like anecdotally, you kind of alluded to this, but there has been some townhouse construction more as of recent as compared to previous years or spans of time. It seems to me then, and maybe you can let me know if this sounds right, but the ones that I've seen, they, they include like a garage parking spot as part of the townhome. And that would kind of be the one space where they would meet the minimum as far as this.
Yes. Yeah, we would count a garage space as meeting the minimum.
And so that's kind of the common, the way it's commonly happening now, where there's not necess, the townhome developments, I don't, it doesn't seem that it's common for them to include a large surface parking lot in addition to the garage spaces, which seems to still be, you know, a considerable increase in density than what was traditionally built in that space over the history of the city. And it just seems as to Commissioner Hedges' comments, I, you know, I, I don't, I think that it's also important to consider all of the different things that have been changing in terms of the market, the incentive, the incentives, you know, accessory dwelling units, the zoning changes. There's been a number of things that will likely have an impact on the density of the community. And I think it is, you know, I think it's important to see how some of this plays out in terms of, there's, it's not just this one issue that's going to drive the density question. Because, you know, it does seem to be that the intent of the law is to encourage infill, higher-density development. I mean, that, that's, you know, kind of the overall objective. And that's most effectively done with like multifamily apartment buildings, so to speak. I mean, that's really intended for these larger apartment complexes. But I do appreciate the, the conversation that you've raised, but those are just some thoughts.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Mr. Gravy?
And so in terms of process, if there was an interest in amending this motion, this original one would be moved, and then we can still have that conversation?
So Jenna, in this?
Yeah, you could do it one of two ways. You could either put out the original motion, have the discussion, and then decide whether or not you wanted to amend it. And then you would be voting on the amended, or you could throw out the amended just to start with.
Gotcha. But we won't be voting on the original without discussing the amendment, so it doesn't really matter.
Right, right. It, it would, it would seem more proper to vote on the original and then have the discussion. Since it doesn't sound like anybody else had the same concern necessarily.
Well, it would be appropriate to move the original.
Yes.
And then there would be then, would there be then another motion that we would vote on to amend it?
Is it called a friendly amendment?
Yes, thank you, Tammy. Bob's rule supporter. Yes, there would be a friendly amendment wherein the original motion could be, I mean technically, it should be withdrawn and then a new motion made with the amendment. But a friendly amendment also works, where it's basically just saying, does everybody agree that we want to amend this motion to include this language? And then you, you move on that.
Prior to voting on the, as written?
You know, you're gonna, you're gonna, we need a motion and a second in order to have discussion.
Yeah, no, we would move and second this motion.
Yeah, you could move and second this motion, and then you can either withdraw it or you can do a friendly amendment and amend it as part of the process. And then that would be the amended motion you would be voting on.
Right. And then you would only, still only vote one time.
Correct.
Yeah, you'd have to vote on the amendment. Yes.
But you would discuss it, you wouldn't vote on it and then have the discussion.
No, so we would, so my experience, Robert's rule order. We would make the motion, make the second during the discussion, then we could amend the original motion to include blah, blah, blah.
And you vote on the amendment?
Then you vote on the amendment, and then we go back to the original motion.
I, I agree with that.
That, that makes sense, yes.
Okay.
That was confusing.
Okay, so I'm gonna move the original and then we can discuss. And if there is an interest in amend after that prior to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning multi-unit residential parking requirements and making conforming amendments therewith.
And I'll second.
Thank you. We have a proper motion and second. We will now have discussion. Original order, Commissioner Woods, discussion.
I am comfortable with the motion as written. I think we've asked a lot of questions and it's brought to bear a lot of good conversation. Actually, what Commissioner Hedges brought up, I'm not so much in favor of acting on that now, but I do believe that was really a worthwhile point, talking about how maybe really the bigger issue is height and how many units can be allowed in one place, as far as getting to what the original intent was. So I appreciate the conversation and I think it was very much worthwhile. But I, I, I believe as written is what I'm most comfortable with.
Thank you. Commissioner Kanas?
I'm gonna be really honest, I would like to, I would like a quick recap of what it is that we're discussing here, because I think I understand what it is, how we want to amend it, but I want to make sure that it is very clear. So Commissioner Hedges?
So I think, so our original motion that we're, that we're gonna vote on now and when we get to Commissioner Hedges, if he wishes to amend it, but it's what is in front of us.
So we are talking about what is in front of us?
Yes.
Okay, I, I am definitely in favor of what is in front of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Gravy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think it's an interesting question. And I think that it's a useful exercise for the city to have to go through to clean up some of these definitions as some of these other policy discussions are facilitated by a clearer understanding of what type of housing is exactly what. And, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a helpful thing to do. I'm also comfortable with, you know, the, the ordinance as written, but I do appreciate the interest in finding out where the comfort level, how far it goes. But I, I do support this change. And I think that, you know, these laws, it's, it's not common, it hasn't been, it's a very complicated thing to have the state make law that has this kind of impact on the decision-making of local governments in this way. And I think the way that the city of Wheat Ridge is addressing this is, you know, thoughtful in that they're being responsive to the concerns on this level, but also preserving some of the character. And frankly, as what was alluded to earlier, you know, the positions of a lot of folks that would be impacted by these changes, and I think that they are sensitive to that. So, but I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate staff answering all of our questions on the spot.
Thank you, Commissioner Gravy. Commissioner Halliwell?
Thank you, Chairman. I am also in support of the motion as written. I do just note that if we are removing the parking reduction allowance, which feels like a carrot for these developers to develop in TODs, that if there's other carrots that we could consider adding so that we continue to encourage affordable housing development in TOD-adjacent areas, that would be something I'd recommend the staff take a look at.
Thank you. And now, Commissioner Hedges?
That's me.
I got you right this time.
Left flank. So yes, I, so I think, yeah, for the purpose of meeting 1304, I think it's something that's important that we're doing this. And how we define what townhouses are, how we define townhouses is kind of up to us, or it is up to us. And so I see this as an important step to meeting the requirements that the states put upon municipalities in that way. So overall, I'm gonna support this amendment, or excuse me, this motion. And then we'll discuss the amendment later. So I think for the purpose of meeting those laws, I think it's important that we move this forward. And so I'm in support of the motion as is, and then I'll talk more later about amendments and my thought on that.
Well, if you, if you would, now would be the time to make an amendment if you wanted to.
Oh, so now is the time to make the amendment? Oh, okay, cool. Okay, sweet. I did write this out. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, before we vote, then we can make the amendment. So I guess at, at any point in time, you can make the amendment.
Should we wrap around for everybody's comments and then do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Disney?
I'm in favor of this ordinance amending Chapter 26. I think it serves its purpose for this point in time. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel and throw in something about a probable thing that could happen in the future. Address it when it happens. So I'm in favor of it as it stands.
Commissioner Moore?
I guess, I'm also in favor of the motion as written.
Thank you. So my comments, I, my understanding of this is it is to come into, the state law has said we have to have no parking requirements on multi-unit development or multifamily developments. Because parking, I think the spirit of the law is that parking is kind of a poor use of land. And the idea is to put another building up and put more units in there and thinking that the price of apartments will decrease, so we can increase the housing. And I understand the spirit of it, and, and I get it because we do have a housing crisis in this city. And I, and I'm reluctantly in support of the, of the motion, but here's my reluctance. We'll just address the 300-pound gorilla in the room, which is going to be Lutheran Legacy and the Apartments Center. And those folks are, were here last week or two weeks ago at the city council meeting, and it was kind of a Donnybrook, and that was a big concern, overflow parking going into the neighborhoods. And if I live in that neighborhood, I would agree with that. And I also understand, Scott, that you said the market will kind of dictate this. No one's gonna build 10,000 apartments and not have any place to park in Wheat Ridge. Because, yes, I understand that we have to have public transit in these areas. We gotta have, we gotta be, live close to the line that has 30-minute intervals. I took, or I got bus passes from XL Energy last year and made an effort to take the bus to and from work. To say it was unreliable would be, with the exception of the train, the bus system was unreliable at best. And so it was late. One time, it didn't even show up, so I had to actually drive to work anyways. I went to a dentist appointment. Now, my dentist is way down south. It was a four-hour bus ride there and back to go to the dentist. So our transit system isn't up to where it makes taking it as a means of transportation consistently an option, really. And my third whine, if you will, is I live in a construction world, right? And we know that not everybody can afford a house in the state of Colorado, in Denver metro area. And a lot of construction workers and my apprentices, they're transit. They work at this job location for X amount of time, and then they get tramped over to another job location and get tramped over to here. So they have to have a car. And in that car, we have all our gear, coveralls for the winter, lunches. We may not work a standard eight-hour day because not everybody gets in the bus, goes to an office, works there eight hours, and goes home. You know, construction people, working-class people, there's options of overtime. Sometimes you're, you know, you, you work a little bit late, you're gonna miss the bus. Now you're three hours getting home to your family, to dinner. And if you drive and you work some overtime, now you're gonna get home and it's gonna be first-come, first-served for parking at your apartment complex. So now I gotta park my vehicle on the street, lock up all my gear, or grab it and go up into my apartment, and then grab it in the morning and go back down. So it's kind of a big, giant pain. So I don't see these parking restrictions or these requirements, or whatever you want to call them, as beneficial as a whole. And I was going to vote no on this just out of spirit, not spite, but just because the working-class folks. And I, and I cannot support an amendment to this to even further make parking on the street or something elsewhere, off-site parking. Because if you have your townhouse, I think you ought to be able to park in your spot. And I think you ought to have a spot. When you put that out on the street, I think it, it's, it's a pain, and I just don't like it. So with that being said, is there any further discussion?
Not on the motion, but I am still gonna make the amendment request for that discussion. So is that the time for this?
Yes.
So, so the amendment would be requesting the city council hold a study session to consider the feasibility of eliminating minimum parking requirements for townhouse developments within transit service areas. At least that's how I wrote it. At least, that's how I wrote it. Did I say that really fast? I'm sorry.
I think I caught.
I was reading it. So I was reading it at mind speed, I guess. So amendment requesting City Council to hold a study session to consider the feasibility of eliminating minimum parking requirements for townhouse developments within transit service areas.
So we have an amendment to the first motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And we can discuss the amendment. And Mr. Hedges, since you made the amendment, you go first.
Okay. So I think, as I mentioned with the motion, I see that this motion is for multifamily and what multifamily is, is kind of a loose description. There's things that are obviously multifamily and there's things that are obviously not multifamily. And then there's those things called townhouses and rowhouses. Rowhouses sit in this gray area. Within the U.S. Code, rowhouses are typically considered multifamily. Within land use development, people do whatever they want. They're kind of all over the place. Some people consider it multifamily, some people do a single-family. A great example is Wheat Ridge. We literally called it both because that was part of this before we got here. The cleanup was, we called it sometimes multifamily, sometimes single-family attached. So when I stop and I think about the purpose of 1304, it's to reduce the amount of unnecessary parking required by cities because parking, increasing parking increases housing cost and encourages vehicle ownership when it's not necessarily required. So there are certain parties that do need it, working, like, working class definitely needs it. I remember when I was a bus driver and I would work the night shift and getting home at 3:00 a.m. from Boulder, when I worked up at the country, or when I worked at the Boulder Garage, was impossible. I had to drive, I had to drive there. It was something I had to do. Right now, I work with, well, in an office, so I have the regular nine-to-five, so the buses are always running. I'm not running them myself. So I understand the concern with that. And I think it's, what it is, is that is where the market forces start to drive it forward and say that they will be the ones that decide that that is needed because they're the ones that are going to build it because they know the market in a suburban neighborhood is going to request it. However, when I look at things such as rowhouses, I look at a situation where maybe they have 20 rowhouses on a lot or in a development area and they want to have 10 of them that have garages and they want the other 10 to not have garages and have five spots just within there. And now you've reduced the amount and then doing that, you've probably built an extra townhouse in that development because of it. And I think having the flexibility for a developer to make that would be something that is good. And so that is why I think, I don't know if the city's ready for that now, today, which is why I went ahead and pushed forward with the motion on yes, but I think having that discussion is worthwhile in the city just to see how much that makes sense. And maybe the discussion just leads to us saying, instead of one per unit, it's .5 per unit? Because then you're saying, now you have 20 and you're requiring 10, so you'd have to have half of them at the very minimum have those parking spots. And so I think having that discussion is what I'm looking for with that amendment, is to make sure that we're going forward and maybe we change it and maybe we don't, but at least we've had that discussion started so we can get there eventually if that's what Wheat Ridge ought to do, feels like it ought to do. So that's my soapbox on the idea.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Gravy.
Thank you. Well, I will just say to Commissioner Hedges, I appreciate you mixing things up. I think it's, I think it's a good thing for this body. With regard to the amendment, I guess I'm a little conflicted because frankly, I think that this is the discussion that's happening. You know, the likelihood that we would go through this process on the exact same topic in the near future seems low. You know, like I kind of alluded to earlier, I think that this is a multi-pronged approach to respond to a housing crisis, to encourage a type of development that is beneficial in numerous ways in terms of higher density with regard to preserving lands that are undeveloped. Frankly, to put some pressure on a transit agency to improve, increase, you know, it's hard to say that you can't rely on transit and then that prevent you from doing things. It's like a chicken and the egg thing because it could be the case that you do some of these things and it moves the needle on the transit side, whereas it wouldn't otherwise have, they wouldn't have had that pressure, this sort of, you know, this kind of thing. I mean, there's a lot to say about transit and while it's adjacent to this, it's not what we're necessarily discussing. And so, you know, in terms of the amendment, I'm just going to, you know, say that I do, I do support it because I feel like there's nothing wrong with us. I don't think it's that big of a push for us to ask the City Council, debate this question that frankly, was a gray area and could have gone either way in this ordinance and it went one way and it could have gone the other. And I don't, I don't know personally how much discussion there was on both options in terms of from council, on the council side. And so I think it's a reasonable amendment and I do appreciate the conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Gravy. Any other discussion? Commissioner Hubble.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Can the developer request a variance to that minimum requirement if we do pass this?
This concerning, so are, are you asking with the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, sorry, not the amendment. Just saying, so right now, as this is going to go forward, it will be required that there's one space, as I read it, right? One space per unit for townhouses. Could a developer request?
They could. They would have to do a parking study.
Okay.
But we would need some evidence to support that. But I do believe they could request a reduction. It wouldn't necessarily be through a variance process, but through the review process. For instance, with senior housing, sometimes seniors don't drive, don't want to drive anymore.
Right.
And so I've seen them frequently with that, where they've gotten a parking reduction. Here, I think, I think it would be the same method.
We have what's called an administrative adjustment process on parking. There's some things, like if you provide extra bike parking or you're next to a train station or something, you kind of can get some of these reductions. They're not common, frankly. I think we actually end up getting the opposite where someone might want to provide a two-car garage instead of the minimum one because they know the unit will be more likely to sell.
So in your experience, even if there's none required from townhouses, most developers are going to build with off-street parking?
Currently, yes.
Currently, yes. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And then is there an option, instead of sending it to City Council, to send it to staff to consider? Like, I don't, don't understand the options for an amendment, I guess, or the order of business.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. I think among staff, we've already kind of had that debate with ourselves.
Okay.
And I think that, like Scott said, it's a, at this point, it's more of a policy decision. And so I think that would need to go to council, to direct staff to change the ordinance.
Okay. And we don't know that if council has or has not already had the same discussion. They haven't seen this yet.
They haven't seen this yet. They did have a study session on this item and we did talk about it, the townhouse versus the apartment. We also provided the direction from DOLA, which was, this is really more about apartments, but it was ultimately up to staff to kind of make that decision and then run it by council. But we did get consensus from council on kind of the framework of this ordinance. They haven't actually voted or seen this actual ordinance yet, though.
Gotcha. Okay. Excellent. I mean, I'm very conflicted because it does seem like a warranted conversation, but again, it's, I'm not sure the timeliness of it is effective. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I do have one question on the amendment. It was just a follow-up to Commissioner Hubble's last comment there. If the amendment passes, there isn't, in terms of, you know, there wouldn't be necessarily like urgency for them. I mean, they could, let me put this this way, they could have this study session at any point in the future that they wanted to. I mean, it's not like the amendment is saying, within the next three months or before you vote on this or something. It's just sometime in the future. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And they could also make the final decision not to go with that suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So either way, yeah.
No other discussion? So now we'll make a poll of the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is in a tie, four to four.
In my experience, a tie vote is a fail. I mean, that's how, that's how it operates in legislature.
Yeah, tie is a failed.
Well, that was interesting. Okay. So now, when you're ready, a poll for the original motion, which was to...
Hold on just a minute.
Democracy in action. Okay, poll for the original motion.
All right. So motion, sorry, motion carried, seven to one.
Thank you, Commissioners Gravy, spirited and appreciate all of this. Our next order of business would be our next public hearing. Commissioner Hubble, will you introduce this?
Yes, this is for ZOA 255, an ordinance amending Section 26502 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Procedural Updates to Landscaping Requirements.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report on this?
We do. I'll keep it brief on this one. This code amendment is related to the landscaping requirements that are currently in our code right now. They were adopted last year, 26502. It was also called the Waterwise Ordinance and they've now been in effect for about six or eight months. And we have found just a couple of discrepancies as you actually implement an ordinance. You want to make sure that it's working and makes sense for staff as well as the community. And then we also found some discrepancies in our ordinance related to the state bill on artificial turf. And we just want to make sure that our definitions align. We're not really changing anything with this ordinance. We're just making sure that definitions are in alignment and we'll update discrepancies, regulations, and the different chapters of the code. I think one of the other errors was that when we did the Lutheran Legacy Campus zoning amendment, we updated that section and the mixed-use section, but we did not update the remaining section, which was the original landscape ordinance related to artificial turf. So there's three changes on this ordinance. One is that it will add a footnote to the landscape calculation table describing how maximum percentages are applied. It's pretty technical, but basically it's that there are maximum allowable limits in the code, but the code did not state how they're actually applied if someone provides more landscaping than is necessary. And so what we've landed on and makes the most sense in practice is applying those to the total landscape provided. So if someone provides 50% landscaping when they only needed to provide 30%, then we calculate the percentages based on the provided percentage. Pretty technical, but something that we needed to do in order to give staff direction on how to actually review these plans. And then the other amendment is related to aligning the artificial turf requirements in the code with the mixed-use code and the Lutheran code. And then we just voted on this, but adding this term, single unit attached, into the landscaping code when regulations apply. To clarify, when regulations apply to townhouse development, because we want to make sure that we're, again, being consistent in our definitions. And the landscape code, I believe, currently does not actually mention townhouses at all. So we want to make sure that it does. These are, for the purposes of this ordinance, they're all under the multi-unit umbrella because from a development standpoint and impervious standpoint, they're similar, but we just wanted to clarify that multi-unit in this case would include the townhome. So that's all, pretty brief, but yeah, let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. It's now opened for public comment. No one in the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom. I close the citizens forum. Do Commissioners, questions from the commission? We'll start to my left. Commissioner Hedges.
Just a curiosity, because I'm in favor of this overall, but you mentioned there's a change in here. The only use of artificial turf that qualifies as landscape materials nonliving is for athletic fields of play, but then playgrounds, gaming areas, dog runs shall not qualify as landscaping? Why is that?
That is a great question for the state legislature because we're honestly not sure. Yep.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Hedges. Commissioner Disen.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hubble?
Thank you. Is there a definition of this use of play? I had the same question, but like athletic fields of play, I mean, if you build it and no one plays, is that still accounted? I am from Iowa, so I had to throw in that quote.
That's a good question, too. Honestly, that was the term the state used, athletic fields of play, and our attorney advised us to just make the terms consistent. So we don't totally know, but it's really athletic fields, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gravy?
No questions.
Commissioner Tinoz?
No questions.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Commissioner Hubble?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Section 26502 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Procedural Updates to Landscaping Requirements.
Second.
We have a proper motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none? Can I have a vote of the commission, please?
Motion carried, eight to zero.
Thank you. Over all our ordinances that we have to move on, we now have any old business?
No old business.
Any new business?
Just on dates, we do not, we will not be having a meeting due to lack of agenda items on June 5th. I would put a maybe on June 19th at this point, although probably not, but we'll, we'll see if something pops up. And then I don't have any development updates. I went over the map last time. I thought that was helpful, hopefully. And I, are you going to, during your report, are you going to announce?
I can do that if you want. Or you can do it.
Okay. No, I'll let you do it. Yeah, so those are, those are all my updates.
Thank you, Ms. Disen. We'll move on to Commissioner Reports and obviously, Mr. Hedges has a report.
Yeah, so I got a promotion, but it's in Oakland, California. So I will be the Climate Change Adaptation Planning Branch Chief, which I'm going to call CAP, so I don't have to say that every time. And then I can also call myself the Catten. But, but that'll be, I'll, June 9th is when I start, so I won't have another meeting here. Unfortunately, I'm leaving earlier than I was hoping to, but yeah, it's, but it should be fun. It's in the Bay Area, so for that whole district, it's all nine counties. I, it's in the Bay Area, so for that whole district, it's all nine counties. So yeah, unfortunately, I have to leave the Commission, but it's gonna be fun. I get to build, I guess, taller highways. Retreat, cliff retreats, sea level rise, that's really what I'm gonna be working on. And like, how to build resilient highways for that kind of impacts. So, yeah, if you're in the Bay Area, let me know. I'm on LinkedIn, say hi. And we'll get coffee. And then otherwise, I had a very wonderful Friday, a couple Fridays ago, where I went from Stylus and Crate to Git Rights to Mr. Biscuits to Mountain Milk. And I got beans at Stylus and Crate, croissant at the Git Rights, biscuits and gravy at the Mr. Biscuits, and then a latte at Mountain Milk. And I just recommend it as a nice tour de Wheat Ridge, if you will, on a nice Friday or Saturday when they're all, they're all open, just as a nice call-out to our downtown. It's a good little walk right through there. And then also Vintage Vogue, get a bowtie. So just kind of stop by all five of those places when you're out. You can do it, it'll only take a couple hours, and it's well worth it. That's my update.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Hedges, and congratulations. Wow, that was quick. Commissioner Disney? Commissioner Moore? Mr. Hubble? Mr. Grayby?
Yeah, one quick thing. Congratulations, Commissioner Hedges. That's very exciting. I'd love to chat with you a little bit more about, about that job. Looks, sounds great. Sad that you'll be leaving us. You've been a fun Commissioner in your short time here. I will say, because it sounds like we may, we might not have a meeting until this, and even if we have one on the 13th, I'm not sure I'd be able to make it, or on the 19th, I don't think I'd be able to make it anyway. But June 28th is Ridge Fest. And as someone who serves on the Board of Directors for Local Works, I, you know, will recommend, folks, spread the word, come have some fun. I will be, for the second year in a row, running the Cornhole Tournament. And last year, it was actually kind of an amazing tournament somehow, like, you know, sudden death, kind of, over time. And we're gonna have some really good music. It's another opportunity to showcase the Makerspace, because it's going to be at Anderson Park again, because the green won't quite be ready yet. And so I, yeah, spread the word. And it's June 28th at Anderson Park, and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hedges. Commissioner Canonis? Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Oh, the only thing that I would add is, is that I hate to say, see Commissioner Hedges go. Our paths crossed often in the day-to-day life of working world, and I appreciate, I really appreciate having had the opportunity to work with him, both in the by-day job and, and certainly on the Commission, for however short a time it's, it's been. And congratulations, that's an incredible job. It sounds wonderful. I hope, I hope he'll report back and let us know how it's going.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to Scott and Jenna and Tammy for everything. You guys are doing wonderful. And I apologize for my restiness on Roberts Rule's Order. You guys are a heck of a lot nicer than 60 grumpy IBEW Local 111 linemen in the audience. Nobody threw lead at us at me, so that's great. Other than that, I have no report. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Call the council or commission? I'm not mayor.
Motion approved, eight to zero.
Thank you.